Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 2nd, 2020. 7:00 PM in time for the regular meeting of the City Council. I was catching an echo. Bill? Is that better? Is it coming from over there? Is it now gone? Now it's gone, okay. Early technical difficulties, thank you. Got it worked out. So, welcome, everyone. Int introductory statement here. The Governor of Iowa has declared a public emergency because of the COVID-19 outbreak. The mayor has determined that an in-person meeting of the City Council is impossible and practical without violating the governor's mandates. When an in-person meeting is impossible and practical, Iowa Code Section 21.8 permits a governmental body to conduct a meeting by electronic means. Meeting will be conducted by video conference using Zoom from the council chambers. The mayor and necessary city staff will be in the council chambers. The seven council members will not be in the chambers but will participate via Zoom conferencing. Comments for the items that are on the agenda or for the public hearing may be made by submitting them prior to the meeting to the city clerk, mayor, or any of the council members, or by calling 309-596-0179 during the meeting. The video/audio conference of the meeting will be broadcast on the normal public access channels. We will strive to maintain the quality of the video and audio during that broadcast. Public access is available through this broadcast. Meeting minutes will still be kept and will include a statement explaining why an in-person meeting was impossible and practical. Carla, if you can conduct the roll call, please. I've called the meeting to order.
Vote four. Here. Bergen.
Here I am.
Drankow.
Here.
Glazer.
Here.
Kangas.
Present.
Rothy.
Here.
And Schneider.
Here.
Thank you. All regular council members are accounted for. Mr. Yanda, our guest council member, had a family emergency. He did notify me that he would not be able to attend this evening's meeting. I hope everything's okay with him. This time, we'll rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Item D is the approval of the agenda as presented. If there is somebody that would like to move that.
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bergen. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Already covered our guest council members, so we'll move forward with the consent calendar. Following items will be acted upon by voice vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or public requests that a specific item be considered separately. Item one is approve the purchase of two 2021 half-ton four-by-four pickup trucks from Kriegerato of Waverly, Iowa, for the total purchase price of $29,404, which includes the trade-in of the 2011 and 2012 Chevy Silverado half-ton four-by-four pickups, pickup trucks for $24,500. Item two is a pay request from Modern Design Incorporated, doing business as Optometric Architects for the Harlington Cemetery Storage Building for the amount of $6,022.77. Item three is a pay request from Modern Design Incorporated, doing business as Optometric Architects for the Cedar River Park Youth Ballfields for the amount of $44,000. Item four is a pay request from Leclerc Engineering Company for the Airport Runway 29 Extension 2018 for the amount of $11,769.37. Item five is a pay request from Hall &amp; Hall Engineers Incorporated for the Youth Ballfields 2019, Cedar River Park, for the amount of $10,639.04. Item six is pay request from Farnsworth Group for the Public Services Center North Edition 2021 for the amount of $893.93. Item seven is a pay request from Wick's Construction Incorporated for the Fourth Street Southwest and Tenth Street Southwest Improvements 2020 for the amount of $537,982. Item eight is a special Class C liquor license for Warburg College. And finally, number nine is a Class E liquor license for Fairway Stores Incorporated, number 561. Motion to approve, please.
I will move approval of the consent calendar as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Rothy. Council discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries on the consent calendar. Section G, regular business. Item number one is a resolution, number 2162, a resolution fixing the date for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a purchase, sale, and development agreement with 1859 Ventures LLC for the property known as the former Red Fox Inn located at 1900 Heritage Way and providing for publication of notice thereof. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-162, fixing November 16, 2020, at 7:00 PM in the council chambers of City Hall as the date, time, and place for a public hearing on the proposal to enter into a purchase, sale, and development agreement with 1859 Ventures LLC for the property known as the former Red Fox Inn located at 1900 Heritage Way and providing for publication of notice thereof.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bergen. Thank you, gentlemen. Any council discussion?
I love the optimism that this will be in the chambers. That'll be great. The less George Orwell, the better.
James, could you talk us through some of the details? I see that there's just kind of an outline of some of the important provisions, such as the purchase price being $1 and the nine equivalent, full-time equivalent positions. But can you kind of walk us through what you consider to be the highlights as set up now, as we know about it now?
Well, let's look at the kind of agreement we're going to be getting into. A lot of what you're going to see at the public hearing is kind of walking through that, the purchase of the grounds. You said we're going to basically donate it for a dollar, although I kind of do want that dollar. So, I want to make sure we at least get that one, frame it up, pin it up, something, maybe tear it in seven pieces, y'all get one. But a lot of it's going to be walking through the development agreement to look at any incentives we're going to provide. You know, as Bill kind of put in his guidelines, you know, we're going to consider this blighted property. So, we'll be looking at the evaluations that they're going to agree to in each partial of the building, since it's different property classifications from commercial to your most multifamily. We'll look at the possible TIF incentives we're looking at. So, it's going to be a good summary of everything we're hoping to propose. We've had very significant discussions with these individuals about it. I think they're in favor of what we're pitching. We just need to make sure we keep it transparent, put it out there public, and give it its due justice.
Well, I did appreciate the part where they can't just spin off and resale the property before they're finished without our approval. That, there are ways that this could go bad for us, and I want to make sure that those are accounted for in the development agreement.
I believe we've discussed as many of those possibilities as we could. I think we've tried to hedge each of them as best as we can. Nothing is obviously airtight, but we were hoping that this is a good positive agreement that will help foster this development from going through and finishing. And that's kind of how we scheduled it, looked at it when it was developed. I think Bill's done a good job in negotiating through his thing with them, so they understand where we sit and they understand where we are. Everything that you're going to see is something we've done many times before. It's just not usually on a multipurpose property like this where multiple pieces come together. So, I think we've hedged off everything we could, and I think what we've pitched is fair. I think they'll agree, and so we're hopeful to get this started and keep them able to cash flow a little bit to make sure this has a better chance of getting completed.
Anything further? Hearing none. Roll call, vote Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, was zero absent. Resolution 20-162 is approved. Item two is Resolution 20-163, a resolution authorizing 1859 Ventures LLC to move forward with roof repairs, winterizing work, and interior demolition work prior to the closing. Entertain a motion.
I will move approval of Resolution 20-163, authorizing 1859 Ventures LLC to move forward with roof repairs, winterizing work, and interior demolition work prior to closing.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Drankow. Council discussion?
Did I hear there was some parts of the building a little bit worse, maybe than what they thought, or how was it looking in there?
I don't think it's any worse than they thought. They've been in there numerous, numerous times. They're just wanting to preserve it as best they can through the winter. When you look at the number of broken windows out there, they want to just make sure it's locked down. All those are sealed up, closed. If there's issues with the roof, leak here and there, get that locked in, just so they can keep it from getting any more damage through a tough winter. So, I think it's what they expected. This is just allowing them to start some of that process early to help make it a little more appealing come spring. And a lot of that winter work, the demo, is the best time to do it. And so, we're just hoping to allow them to get in about a month early. They're obviously insured. We've talked to our insurance company with it, and everything's okay to do this. We just need council approval to allow them to kind of supersede that agreement right now, and then the closing be next month, just to allow them to really get a jumpstart on it for spring.
Yeah, I'd have to agree with James on that. It's not necessarily that it was worse than they thought. I think it was overall, maybe we thought it was better than it is out there. There's a lot that needs to be addressed, you know, certain areas of the roof and that kind of thing, so only going to get worse with time, so. Any other comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
And Schneider.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-163 is approved. Moving on to item three is Resolution 20-164, resolution accepting certification filed by the Finance Director to the Bremer County Auditor detailing the amount of new loans, advances, and indebtedness, which qualify for payment from tax increment revenues of the Waverly Unified Urban Renewal Plan. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-164 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Rothy. Council discussion?
As long as we don't have to check her math, it's okay with me.
We checked it. It's good.
Should be good. It's all Excel.
Thank you, ma'am. Hearing no further discussion, roll call, Carla.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-164 is approved. Item 3A is approval of the fiscal year 2020 State Urban Renewal Report. Entertain a motion for that.
I'll move approval of the fiscal year 2020 State Urban Renewal Report.
Second.
I'll second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bowfer. Council discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, the same sign. Motion carries. Item four is Resolution 20-165, a resolution approving the United States Department of Transportation standard Title IX nondiscrimination assurances and the Title IX nondiscrimination agreement. Entertain a motion, please.
I will move approval of Resolution 20-165, approving the United States Department of Transportation standard Title VI nondisclosure assurances and the Title VI nondiscrimination agreement.
Second.
Motion by Bergen, second by Glazer. Thank you for correcting me on my Roman numerals. It's been over 22 years. I appreciate that. It's Title VI. Any council discussion here after the motion has been made and seconded?
I'm assuming that this and the next couple of resolutions are in response to the federal grants we have to help pay for First Street Northwest?
Um, we look at number four through eight. These are all the policies we discussed a little bit at our strategic planning session. The first one, Title VI, is necessary for any federal monies that come through Federal Highway Administration. So, this actually was kicked off by the trail extension that we're doing. But anything going forward, we need to be on file as having these agreements, et cetera, in order to take these funds. The next four in response to the CARES Act, where we are getting our FEMA money, whopping $7,000, $3,000, somewhere in that range, that we need to have. But anything, again, going forward, if things continue, we would also have to have these in place. And we were not giving a lot of leeway on this. It was pretty much, this is what we want, that's the way it's going to be, so go approve them. It's the way the federal kind of works. We said, okay, I guess that's that. We will go back through and make sure they aren't duplicating other policies we have or if we need to rename something. But this was kind of directed straight to us from the feds to get that funding, and we didn't have a whole lot of choice. I want to thank Jessica for working through this. It was nasty getting these things done and making sure they met their requirements. So, numbers four through eight, they're all the same issue. It's in order to get our federal money, and we need to have these policies in place. As they change theirs, they'll ask us to change ours, and this will not be a one-time thing. This will continue going forward for as long as we ever have federal government and get their money. So, buckle in. This is not going to be the first of these you'll see.
You make it sound so attractive.
It's awesome. It's the best thing ever today. It definitely kept us employed for quite a while on these, and I assume it will going forward. I don't know if Jessica wants to add anything, but I know she put a lot of time and effort into this.
No, that's pretty much it. They said we have to have these before we receive the funds, so I guess we bring them to you to get adopted.
Looks for me. Any other comments? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-165 is approved. Item five is Resolution 20-166, a resolution approving the City of Waverly fraud reporting policy. Entertain a motion.
I'll move Resolution 20-166, a resolution approving the City of Waverly fraud reporting policy.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bergen. Council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla, please.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-166 is approved. Item six is Resolution 20-167, a resolution approving the City of Waverly personally identifiable information policy. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-167, approving the City of Waverly personally identifiable information policy.
Second.
Motion by Schneider, second by Bergen. Council discussion, if any? Hearing none again. Roll call, Carla.
Bergen.
Yes.
Drink, excuse me, vote four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
And Drankow.
And yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-167 is approved. Item seven is Resolution 20-168, a resolution approving the City of Waverly segregation of duties policy. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-168 as read by the mayor.
Second.
Motion by Rothy, second by Bergen. Council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Vote four.
Yes.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow. Bergen.
Yes.
I think Drankow answered, but he's muted.
Yes, he was muted.
Yes, sorry.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-168 is approved. Item eight, Resolution 20-169, a resolution approving the City of Waverly procurement policy for federally funded projects. Entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of Resolution 20-169, approving the City of Waverly procurement policy for federally funded projects.
Second.
Motion by Drankow, second by Bergen. Council discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, Carla.
Schneider.
Yes.
Rothy.
Yes.
Kangas.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Drankow.
Yes.
Bergen.
Yes.
Vote four.
Yes.
On a vote of seven to zero, zero absent. Resolution 20-169 is approved. Item number nine is revisit and potentially amend Resolution 20-126, a resolution requiring face masks be worn by any member of the public while being an occupant of a public building. I'm going to just briefly ask James if there's been any concerns by staff towards any opposition or anything like that, any issues with the public?
We really haven't had any. Staff's been very good about this. The public has been compliant. We've not had any complaints or any challenges to this. It's been very quiet, actually, and so far, so good. But we've not had any issue whatsoever that I'm aware of, sir.
Thank you. Anything else on this subject? Recommendations?
I'd just like to make a comment. I haven't seen very much about this in the news media, and I know we have a representative of the local newspaper that's in on this discussion. So, I'm a little surprised that there hasn't been a little bit more coverage on this, but I would like to hold this up to the camera. This is very low-tech, so hopefully people can see this. Let's see, maybe not.
Yep, just back just a little bit. There you go.
There we go. There we go. Okay, this is basically the graph line of the seven-day average of new cases in the state of Iowa, and it goes all the way back from early March, and it comes through here until you'll notice where we're at right now with this very large spike right up here. This is really not a time to let ourselves get complacent about what's going on, because we're in a lot of trouble right now. This is actually Bremer County. This is the number of new cases in Bremer County over a 14-day period, and this graph starts May 22nd, or 26th. So, we had almost no cases in Bremer County prior to May, and now look where we are right now over at the end. It's 178 new cases in Bremer County in the last two weeks. You know, this is certainly not a time to let our guard down. This is a time where we really have to redouble our efforts to make sure that we keep our neighbors and the people that we talk to and the people that we visit with safe. You know, wearing masks is not so much to protect yourself as it is to protect other people and the people that you come in contact with. I hope people realize that if they're going to be out in public, that they have some consideration for the people that they meet by wearing a mask. And I think that, you know, eliminating the mask requirement on, in city buildings right now would be sending the wrong message.
I would like to understand where we're coming from on this in terms of, we need to under, I want to understand what are the metrics that we're aiming for? I mean, we're looking at these cases where the media is obsessed about these cases. And matter of fact, I would like the media to do And matter of fact, I would like the media to do some investigative journalism on these, uh, PCR tests because, uh, there's something extremely suspect with the PCR testing that's going on. Um, so, first of all, just on the surface, it's very suspect because, uh, they're giving out values as far as like yes or no or plus minus. So basically, it's like either it's positive or it's not. And if you understand PCR testing at all, y- you understand that that is just totally bogus and totally the incorrect way to, uh, to be looking at this. So it would be a lot like, um, talking about tornadoes without the F scale. And what's actually going on here, when you actually read the science and talk to, to scientists that aren't employed by the government, uh, i- it appears that, that these cases are, are mild and they're kids and no symptoms. And the reason we have a case spike is because we have policy in place that chain reacts tests. A kid gets it in school and ten friends have to test. And, uh, so yeah, that, that's why we're seeing this explosion in cases. Same thing with the hospitalization rates. There's been different sets of criterias back in March and April than there is now. The data is so inconsistent. I mean, this is really, really terrible. And I, I'm, I'm actually not surprised, but why in the world is there not any? In, actually, there was a New York Times piece, and I'll be glad to share this with everyone, on this PCR testing, um, thing. But, but disregarding all of that, why are we forcing public to wear masks? Because some people can't, they medically can't. Some people have difficulty hearing, so we're limiting people in public building. And, you know, we, we vote, I think, uh, you know, we're voting this tomorrow. So, uh, and we're voting in City Hall is, is one of those locations. We can't require masks and when people vote, that's probably a form of voter suppression. Uh, but the whole argument is really, really quite ridiculous. So please, help me understand, what metrics are we, are we looking for when we won't require masks anymore?
I'm sorry, um, Matt. I, I am really, really upset right now because a high school senior who is a friend of my son just got put in the hospital today because his oxygen levels were too low. So kind of saying that, you know, it's not as bad as all that is really just setting me on edge. And I, I realize that, you know, you're looking at, at numbers and you're trying to be objective and questioning, but these are real people who are being affected by this test. There are over a hundred new tests this past week. Um, I mean, the, the numbers are growing a phenomenal rate. It is scary. And if, if it's not scary to you, I don't think you're taking it seriously. I mean, I have to admit, last week I was at the city council meeting and I was looking at all of my colleagues and all of the staff who were dutifully wearing masks correctly over their nose and mouth, except for one particular council member. And I think that we really need to take this seriously and stop pretending that this is some kind of conspiracy to make us afraid. There are people dying. There are people's grandparents and friends and colleagues dying. And I think that trying to make light of it by questioning, you know, do we really understand what these tests are saying? Um, there are experts who understand what these tests are saying. And I think that trying to, you know, create a tempest in a teapot, I mean, I think that our policy is necessary. As we look at the exponential growth of this disease, you know, you want metrics? I want, the metrics I'm gonna give you is when the number of positive tests are below, um, what they were in April. You know, when we have the number of positive cases are below ten in, in Bremmer County, that would be awesome. Okay, but this notion that this isn't as bad as people are making out to be, I mean, it's going to be to the point where everyone in Waverly knows someone who has had serious, seriously impacted by this disease. And I would rather that we didn't have to wait until everyone knows someone who got sick. I'm, I'm upset because now I know someone who's in the hospital because of this. But we shouldn't have to wait until everyone is convinced because they have a personal friend or relative who's been affected by this. So I'm, I'm sorry, I think that trying to pretend that this is a conspiracy is just insulting to the people who are suffering from this disease. So I'm, I'm sorry if I went off, off a little bit, but this kind of hit me today and I'm kind of upset about it, so.
If, if you want metrics, I mean, the metrics we use in our office, and we've had this metric since April when we locked down. Um, and basically, everybody wears masks in our office, uh, uh, except when they're at their workstation, they're not, they're permitted to take their masks off. If they're not at the workstation, they're required to wear a mask. Metrics we have in our office is that we, we come out of lockdown when we've had, I believe it's fourteen straight, yes, it is fourteen straight days of declining seven-day average. And, uh, there are less than six new cases in Bremmer County over the last two weeks. At this point, I think that's probably going to be sometime, uh, the end of 2021 before we actually hit those metrics. But, uh, we've been impacted considerably by, uh, by COVID cases. And yeah, I know, not a lot of people are dying. We've only had nine deaths here. We had two deaths, uh, last week. Uh, but, you know, two deaths are two deaths too many, and we're still looking at about a percent and a half to two percent fatality rate on this. So this is not something, I mean, it's, it, it's not like a bubonic plague. It's not like Ebola where we, you know, you have twenty or thirty or forty percent, uh, mortality rate. But this is scary stuff, and we need to take it seriously. And ignoring the science on this or, or trying to, to, to make excuses for it and, and stick our head in the sand isn't gonna help us any, um, you know.
And it's worth pointing out that we're not just talking about mortality. I mean, a lot of these, there's a lot of signs that people who have serious case of COVID are gonna be dealing with the after effects for years and years. I mean, it's gonna be like polio where you may be recovered from polio, but you're still suffering from the after effects for years and years. It's a virus like shingles where you can get shingles and you'll be feeling the pain from shingles for twenty years. We don't know what the long-term effects of COVID are, but it doesn't seem like it's either you're dead or you're fine. There's a lot of in-between where people are gonna be suffering from the after effects of this disease.
And, and my, my granddaughter, my, uh, my five-year-old granddaughter, uh, has, um, juvenile diabetes. If she should contract this disease, it would probably be a death sentence. So her family has to pretty well stay locked down as much as they possibly can to avoid any possibility of her catching this disease. And the more people that ignore the health protocols to get a handle on this disease, the, the, the harder it is for people to be able, who, who have conditions to be able to dodge getting this. So th- this is something we just absolutely have to get a handle on.
The challenge here is we, this is a monomaniacal approach to a very, very complex problem. And nobody here is doing a cost-benefit analysis on the effects of what we're doing. And that's the challenge I have with it. It's, and, and also, you know, to get labeled it being a conspiracy, I mean, that, that's absolutely ridiculous. I just wanna get back to, this is, this is an insult on science that I'm looking at. Um, science is about exchanging ideas and, um, and looking at data points and doing A-B comparisons. And if we fail to do that, we are gonna fail our residents in a big, big way. Uh, but, uh, you know, and, and this is a serious disease, and that, that is some of the challenge with this, is we have, you know, um, y- you know, there are older people in the population who aren't taking this as seriously as they need to be. But on the other hand, we're masking up our kids, which is totally ridiculous, totally ridiculous. I'd like to see us to at least, um, get a vote on this, 'cause I'd like to at least repeal this for tomorrow when they have to vote. Um, but, you know, we have to start walking back some of this policy because it, um, none of it was implemented on the premise that it was implemented on. You know, flatten the curve is what the, what we were told, and, uh, what, what happened to flatten the curve? And the whole flatten the curve notion is, is based upon herd immunity. So I keep hearing these excuses that is coming out of the media that don't jive with science. And, you know, and, and if, you know, if we wanna argue against the leading epidemiologists at Stanford and Harvard and Oxford, then go right ahead, but I happen to like that kind of science. Science that is irresputable by fact.
Well, what we're trying to do here...
Can I, can I cut in just for a second?
Please.
Sorry. Um, there's a, one of the biggest things that is lacking in this entire epidemic is public health and education. Literally, I have heard very little from public health other than, uh, a blip that goes up every day that how many people have it and how many people died. I hear very little about education and what does wearing a mask mean? Um, what, what does, um, some of these, what does droplets mean in six feet? Why are we doing six feet? There's so, there's no education, um, out there, like, none. Um, you know, I, I, so I think that that's where we're failing here. And, you know, I teach in class, and the very first thing I teach in my, my CNA students, the very first skill is the most important skill that stops the spread of infection. Do you wanna know what that is? That's washing your hands and washing your hands properly. And that is the number one thing to do. That is that you, easiest thing that you yourself can control, eh, any of us, is to wash your hands before you do anything, after you do anything. Be, when you, be, once you get to work, wash your hands. When you get home, wash your hands. After you, before you eat, after you eat. All the time, wash your hands, not to the point where they get cracked and bleeding and everything, but number one thing. And we are not telling people to do that. Mask, yes, okay, masks are, some masks are important. These cloth masks are less effective than the actual surgical mask. Um, masks do prevent, that's why they wear them in surgeries, prevent you from spitting when you're talking or laughing, um, or singing. Okay, so that helps all this stuff that's flying out of my mouth right now from spreading six feet, um, beyond me. So yes, a mask is gonna help. However, I can put a mask on and I can touch it all day long, but if I don't wash my hands and I'm touching my face and my eyes, if I'm touching surfaces that people have coughed on, I'm touching my face and my eyes without washing my hands, it does no good. People will touch their face when they have a mask on. People should wear a mask because you never know what you might have, and it's gonna prevent me from spitting on you. You can wear a mask, but you need to accompany some of those things by washing your hands, washing them properly and knowing when to wash your hands. There has been zilch, hardly any education on this. And I cannot stress enough, washing hands, disinfecting surfaces and staying home when you're sick. And employers need to be very, very lenient with people and that have kids or themselves that are sick. And until we do that, this is, the hospitals are getting full. I have been getting reports of hospitals, they are getting full. Um, the University of Iowa is having to open up and, and reach out for more staffing. The hospitals are fighting over nurses and, eh, and respiratory therapists and lab techs. They're getting full, um, because not just COVID-19, but now it's also sick and flu season. One of the biggest things I did during flu season, every single year, was put a mask on and washed my hands before and after I went in to see any patient in the emergency department. And guess what? I even left a mask on. I would put my mask on even walking around the nurses' station just in case I had something. I didn't wanna spread it to my coworkers. And guess what else I did? I washed my hands and I disinfected everything in the morning, it, a couple hours later and in the afternoon, like everything that I touched, like keyboards and everything. So all of these things matter. There's six links in the chain of infection, and it just takes breaking one to stop the, the prevention of, um, eh, and preventing the spread of infection.
Well, we're, we're not gonna solve the country's problems here tonight, but I, I think we can act to try to, uh, protect the health of our city employees. So I move that we continue, uh, to implement resolution twenty dash one twenty-six as we have in the past.
I'll second that.
Unless there's a, a motion to, um, amend this in a different way, it would stand as it is currently in place.
I would like us to bring this forward in one week, uh, as well as all of the other COVID policy.
You mean in two weeks? I don't believe we have a meeting next week.
Yeah, yeah, in two weeks. Uh, thank you. Um, you know, I think the other thing we have to look at is results. And I'm scouring over countries and cities and states, and nowhere can I find one where they implement a mask policy. There is virtually no difference. You cannot detect where they're implementing that policy. It's actually even worse. When they implement the policy, the cases go up. So, and you know what's even more interesting? Dr. Fauci wrote a paper on this about the nineteen eighteen flu epidemic where the, um, the, uh, the number of deaths were outstripping, it was from people wearing their masks. They were getting, they were getting infection. So there are unintended consequences of this. And it's, you know, again, what I'm against is us forcing citizens to, to wear a mask. These are public buildings. They should be treated as public buildings.
I know it was mentioned a few minutes ago about, I, I can't remember if it was Brian or, or Rod that, that mentioned it, something about, you know, voting tomorrow on our, we've got, you know, two precincts here at the Civic Center. We've got one at the fire station and that, um, the, the ruling by our local Otter's office was, you know, masks are not required. That's not to be construed, that masks are not strongly recommended to, to be worn in those venues. Uh, just to make that perfectly clear, uh, that's, that's my position on that. They are strongly recommended in public. Um, but as far as, uh, the mandate in our city buildings, um, those two locations specifically, if you are going to vote, they're not required, but they are strongly suggested, um, to, to do that. So, um, not trying to influence anybody to not wear masks, um, because they are recommended, so.
Well, I would say that if you're not wearing a mask to vote, it will slow down the process because I believe in some of the precincts, they will wait until everyone else is out. You will vote by yourself. When you leave, they will wipe everything down and then they will reopen it for the rest of the community. So I think that if you are not wearing a mask, it will slow down the voting process.
Not sure the logic of that, though. I mean, not wearing a mask, what's the diff- I mean, a mask is one thing. People, if they haven't washed their hands, as Heather said, it's the same issue. People wearing a mask but haven't washed their hands, they're coming in with the same stuff that somebody not wearing a mask would be.
Do we have, like, with this mask policy, do we have, um, something saying, hey, use hand sanitizer when you walk into the building? 'Cause maybe we should add that, too.
I believe City Hall has hand sanitizer as you come in the entrance. So I believe it's there for people to use.
Yeah.
I, I believe the library had it, too, although the library has closed because of the number, uh, I, they have closed their, uh, in-person visits. So the library is now switching to remote access only, just because the numbers have gotten so extreme.
Right. And I know most of the workstations here at City Hall and, and areas have, there's hand sanitizer, it seems to be everywhere, so, um, and that's the, that's the largest element of this mandate for our public buildings is, you know, protecting our work, our workforce. You know, we, we do operate at a skeleton crew, and when they do work in, you know, close quarters and, and that kinda thing, um, one person getting it and spreading it through could, you know, jeopardize city operations very quickly, so.
Hey, one more data point and then I'm fine with voting. You know, it's tragic and it's, it's horrible, uh, that we have viruses and we die from things like coronaviruses, and it's horrible that we die of things from the flu. We have, what, nine, I think, in Bremmer County? UNICEF says one hundred and thirty million people will die from starvation, lack of food. UNICEF says one hundred and thirty million people will die from starvation, lack of food. This was my concern with the governor when she did all of this nonsense. You cannot slow productivity in a food-producing economy. When we put masks on and when, when we scare people like we're doing, we're dampening productivity. And this is very serious meddling that we're doing. So, uh, and, and I've got ton, I've been researching this uh all year and I've got quite a bit that I could share. But I won't, I, but I do think that we need to push forward with having a more thorough discussion on this at the next meeting.
Mr. Draco, uh, you mentioned a, a motion. Do you want to extend that motion for an affirmation of the resolution as it stands?
Uh, yeah.
And have a vote?
I, I thought that's what I had moved.
Okay, I, I just wanted to make sure um because of, for not changing it, but we can, we can do a, a roll call vote to affirm the, the resolution as it stands, if you would like.
That, that is my intention, yes, thank you.
Okay. And then I believe, uh, Mr. Bergen.
I second that.
Seconded that. So at this point, we've had council discussion on this item. I'll ask Carla for a roll call vote.
Draco.
Yes.
Schneider.
No.
Uh, Bergen.
Yes.
Rafi.
Yes.
Glazer.
Yes.
Angus.
Yes.
Both four.
Yes.
A vote of six to one with zero absent, the Resolution twenty dash one twenty-six is affirmed as currently written. Moving on to item number ten is the discussion of possible creation of the Human Equity and Inclusion Commission. I'll let James leave this off.
Um, yes, sir. After the presentation that the um task force gave to council, the next meeting, they discussed the desire to move forward and become a full-blown commission. Instead of simply a task force. And so I recommended them to make an actual formal statement requesting that to the council. We can then have discussion of that and if there's consensus to move forward, we would then place on the next agenda or one of the near agendas. Um, it may not be till December because of all that it takes to become a commission, that very process and get that started. And I do believe it's three readings and there's quite a bit that goes into it from new ordinance being written, et cetera. So that is kind of what brings this to today is the request from the task force to become a full-fledged commission uh and to move forward with that process. So I'm open for discussion on that, counsel.
I would like to, in, in somewhat of a fashion, uh, make sure that we hear from everybody um on this, if they would like to, to make a, a comment. Is there anybody that wants to?
I'll start.
Okay.
I'll start. Uh, I don't have a problem with looking at forming a commission from this task force. I think we need to spend a little time to make sure that we clearly define what the commission would be doing. Um, I know there are human equity commissions or civil rights commissions in other cities and other places. I'm not sure that's necessarily the intent that we want or need here uh for what we want this commission to do. Um. But I also want to make sure that we're, you know, upfront about what it is they're doing and what kind of the focus uh should be for that. And clearer on, you know, even um makeup of the commission. Is, is this going to be a commission that we're going to want to make sure we have certain demographics represented uh in the commission? Beyond, besides just the mandated male, female from the, the governors or from, not the governor, from the, the state's requirements um that are out there now. Uh, so that is, I guess those are my concerns with moving forward with the commission side of it.
I would, I would agree a little bit with Tim's comments. I think that um the commission, I've been able to attend a couple of their meetings and I think they're very diligent and hardworking and trying to formulate uh some concrete goals. So I think that this would be a worthy um topic and to have a commission on. But I think I would like to see some formal education for the commission about the issue of inclusion and diversity. Um, so that they know some examples of other commissions and have definition of terms. Um, and as Tim said, sort of have more of a, a concrete discussion about what their goals would be. I think that um they, at the last meeting, they started talking about maybe looking at some other examples of what commissions have done. Um, and some language that could be used for um goal setting. And so I think, and Heather, you could comment on this as the, as the council member on there. But I think they also would appreciate um having some help in sort of formulating what they need to do and narrowing down their goals. You know, they have high aspirations, which is great, but um they have so many goals that it might be difficult to get them done. And if you're going to look at a commission and how to measure outcomes and the difference they could make, I just think some education about the topic in general. And whether it's staff help or an outside expert to help them hone in on what those goals would be and how to accomplish them would be beneficial. Whether you do that before you, you form the commission formally or do that. Um, you know, decide that we're going to have a commission and then help them do that. I'm not sure which order it should go in, but I, I, those are the points I would like to raise.
Um, I do, I agree both with uh Tim and Ann. Um, you know, and they do need a little bit more direction, maybe to narrow those, those things down. Um, uh, of their, what their goals are. Um, I, I think it's very much needed. Um, and, and they do need that. They have been looking and wanting to get some education right now. Um, so getting some sort of formal education, um, I think it would be very helpful um to them. And um eh they could definitely benefit from that. I think everybody could um for sure. Um, so they definitely would probably appreciate more direction um in goal setting. Um, specifically from the council and it had been administration. Um, you know, and they did talk about um some similar um commissions. And they did research um some that, you know, with city sizes, maybe similar or a little bit bigger than ours. Um, and they did talk about how this did take significant time for these commissions, up to a year to even really define and lots of revisions. Um, of goals uh to get things down um. To be more specific. Um, it, so it did take a lot of revision and a lot of time. Um, so eh when we, if we would develop um this commission. Um, I would highly suggest that the city council, say, really um give that time. Um, and allot that time to the commission. Um, human equity and diversity deserves that time. They deserve that research and that education. Um, and really it's, it takes a lot of consideration. It's a really um delicate process um thing to go through, I think. Uh, and um, so I think if we do. Uh, do this, that we do need to provide that time and provide the support. Um, you know, and the people that have, that are on this, um, they have really worked diligently. Um, they have really put their time and effort in there into this. And um have been very honest and forthright and respectful um to each other. Um, and, and sharing their knowledge and their experiences. Um, so a special thanks to uh Shane and Amy uh for, you know, being some of the very big, strong supporters in this group as well. Um, and then also for, to James Bronner, um, you know, thank you for being there and just allowing that, them to explore some of the things that they need to explore. Um, to get to where they are right now. And again, it's going to take some time. So, um, I guess, you know, I. I do have other comments, but I'll let some other people talk first or make comments.
Well, I suppose I'd like to echo a lot of what other people have said. Um, and I think a, as everyone has, a, as people have said, this uh task force has put a lot of work and has taken the, the task very seriously. Um, so I'd like to thank them for all the, the time and effort they've put in, into their work. Um, I agree with what other people have said, that I think this commission, eh if it were to become a commission, would really benefit from more direction. Um, I think that right now, they had such a broad charge that they're having a hard time focusing on, you know, just one or two things. I mean, they have such a broad scope that it's really hard to do everything at, at the same time. Um, so I definitely think that. As a city council, we would need to provide a whole lot more specific direction for what we're hoping them to accomplish. I'd like to acknowledge the Embrace Group that has been doing a lot of similar um or related work as to this diversity and equity. Um, and I'd like to see this, this diversity and equity commission supplement rather than try to replace what's going on with Embrace. I think the Embrace has done a really good job of creating community events where we have the chance to get out and socialize and meet. And cross a lot of those barriers. Um, I think the Embrace Diversity Group does a really good job of creating positive energy and social events. That are really, you know, building something within our community. Um, what I would like to see the Equity and the Diversity Task Force focus on are. More of the rules and regulations and, you know, what's some of the, the minutia and the details and the, the small background things that we can identify. Can we identify places where there is inequity? Can we identify barriers that currently exist and what can we do about them? I think that you're going to have to have one group like Embrace that is building excitement and events and, and energy. But then you're also going to need a group that's kind of looking at, you know, what can we do from a legal standpoint? What can we do from administration standpoint? But I'd like to really separate those groups out. Um, I'd really like that any city council commission to focus on, you know, the small details rather than, you know. I always said the, the rah rah happy stuff. I mean, in, in some senses, commission has to be, you know, the boring work of solving diversity and equity problems. Um, that's what I would see this kind of commission working on. And I don't think it's glamorous work, but I think it's very important work.
I have to uh make sure and um. You said something about supplement, not replace Embrace. And I don't think anybody has ever tried to replace Embrace. Embrace is its own separate entity. And in fact, they've actually came in and they presented to uh the task force and did a wonderful job. Um, and, and talked about that and talked about what they did. So um part of the task force, what they want to do is learn about some of the different things that we already have in Waverly. And uh maybe bridge some of that together and find some of those things, those gaps that we're missing. Um, and, and focus on, on those. And, and if that is, if that does mean working more on policies and um some of those things, those, you know, maybe are, it's what's going to bridge the gap. Um, but definitely, um, you know, when you say supplement, not replace, that was, that's never an intention, was the intention to replace anybody. It's more of a um the glue that kind of brings everything together, I think, is what, what the task force.
Well, I've, I've been to a number of, of the meetings, of course. Um, and one of the things that I appreciated that the diversity and equity task force was talking about was, we have all of these opportunities. But somehow not everyone's taking advantage of those opportunities. And we're asking the question, why do we have so many, you know, community events, um, opportunities? That somehow the word isn't getting out, that, that, that we're not doing a good job of communicating those things. That's the kind of structural problem, the structural question as to why aren't people knowing about these events? That I would like this commission task force to tackle. Not, we need another event, because I don't think we need another event to, you know, get out and, you know, get together. I think there's lots of events going on in town for those opportunities. I'd like to address the question, why are we being ineffective at reaching out to all of these underserved parts of our community? That's the kind of the, the structural hard questions I'd like to see this commission working on. And I guess that, that, that's, that's my opinion. I, I, I'm, I'm one person on the council, I want to hear other people and get a consensus, but that's kind of what I identify as my concern.
I hear what you're saying on the structural side, but when I hear structural side, what I'm thinking on that is the, when you hear the terms systematic racism. I want a commission that is going to be looking at, do we have policies that are biased? In ways that we aren't aware of, uh, that are causing some of this. Um, if that really is what's happening. Um, I mean, we don't have specific red line uh laws in place that I'm aware of, I hope, sure hope not.
Not anymore.
Uh, but, you know, tho, tho, those are fairly blatant, but then again, there are other uh. Not as on the surface issues that maybe are in there. Um, whereas the Embrace, yeah, I like the idea of the Embrace Group being the fun, the open, let's share what we know. Let's share our, our, our customs and traditions and our, our community with each other. Um. And the advertising and, and the getting the word out about that is, is another matter. I'm not sure that commission's job do that as much as a commission's job is that nitty-gritty, uh, boring dive into the code. Um, whether it's housing code, whether it's zoning ordinances, um, any of rental policies, things like that, that actually specifically uh impact people. Um, that's what I think the commission needs to be focused on.
Um, they've also talked about, a lot about, um, you know, language that is used. Um, so there's some uh, some things that, you know, maybe the city or we can encourage um businesses within the city to use different language. And um, you know, even encouraging, you know, bigger units such as the hospital um to use, you know, appropriate language. Um, you know, and so they're, and they're, they're trying to identify some of those things as well, you know, what's, eh, what is appropriate? What eh, you know, what isn't? How can we educate somebody who's going to educate um people? And just to make it more uh of a welcoming environment for people to come in and, and work. Um, because that's what we want people to do is come in here to work and then come in here and feel comfortable enough to live. So um that's eh, that's something that's, that's pretty important too um for the entire city. So how can we make it more welcoming, um, you know, that way uh too, so.
Yeah, and I, I really think they would benefit from having some expert guidance on that because they have very good ideas and personal experiences. And so how do you help them put that all together uh with some guidance from expert, in expert in, you know, inclusive language or communications? Um, because there's certainly, I, I, I like what Tim and Brian are saying about looking at policies. There are written ways that, that city government operates, then there are unwritten ways about city government. And just what, you know, a big topic for the commission has been, how do we, um, how do we in, increase the number of, of people of color? Or um get more diversity in city staff, right? And our policies and the way we um hire, we have rules about everyone gets an equal opportunity, the, the issue of. The the issue of the police force came up. And regardless of what color or background you are, you have to be able to pass the physical fitness test in order to be considered for the police department. So what can we do to make city positions more attractive to people of color? How can we mentor, you know, things like that? And and but, you know, I think that some of the goals that they're interested in doing might not be what the city task force wants to do. Some of their goals have more to do with public health than the city typically gets involved in, you know, like mental health treatment, chemical dependency treatment. And many of the ideas they have are are some of them being done by other entities within the city and county. And it might just be improving communication in marketing of what's available, what's out there. So I think they could really use guidance about how to narrow down their goals and then how to formulate, if they want to create a pamphlet for city businesses, as was one of their ideas, who could help them do that? Either from city staff or outside sources such as at Workburg or the the League of Cities or other entities that that could assist.
One of the biggest things that, you know, maybe in in healthcare, you know, that that is very important specifically to minorities, that it has been an an equity issue, healthcare wise. So, you know, that has been on their radar. And I think they're probably going to stick with that that issue because that is an inequity. It is a big, big inequity, believe it or not. So, you know, kind of pushing that. And maybe actually, you know, having them be more of an accountability, checks and balance kind of thing for healthcare, because I know there are some systems out there in healthcare and locally, and we try to do a good job. However, you know, we could do better. And so definitely, I I think that's gonna stick on their radar with the health and and mental health and and substance abuse and stuff. Definitely is gonna be there. So one thing that I can think of for this commission, if we do put a do a commission, they definitely need support. And when we don't, when we have nonchalant, we don't support them attitudes, it's hard for somebody, you know, a black male or female to come into town and and to work. And if we're not, you know, if we're nonchalantly not supporting them, you know, or or it's gonna be hard for them to even wanna even serve on this commission if we're not supporting them as a city council, 100%. You know, so I've I've heard, and I'm just gonna go into this, it's gonna take me a minute, so please bear with me. But I feel like this needs to be said. So I've heard some rhetoric that there is some in some closed social media groups. A few concerned citizens actually took on themselves to share with me and probably some others. So I can only imagine what others have heard or read. You know, and I wish that they would come forward and say what they've heard or read or observed as well. The things are that were being said just about this task force were demeaning, dismissive, casting doubt on these entities that were put in place to help improve Waverly. In one of these closed groups, one particular person is a council member and they openly chastised the Human Equity and Diversity Ta- Task Force on this closed social media group and even named individuals and questioning their integrity and into how they got on the task force and the mayor nominated them. This particular council member does show up to the meeting sometimes, a lot of times. And and I've realized now that it's not with the intention to be helpful, but rather to hover in judgment instead. So, so as city council, all of us vote for people that are appointed to task force or commissions. We can say no, we can make suggestions, we can reach out and help the mayor make appointments. We can encourage people in in the community to apply for these commissions. You know, so as a council member myself, I've experienced this burden of being demeaned and chastised as well. So, and it might surprise you that it's it's, for the most part, it's not from the citizens. It's actually been from other council members. So, and it's nonchalant casting doubt, demeaning ideas or suggestions of others and even laughing at times with ideas, making things seem silly. These attitudes are like rich nobles dismissing a commoner's idea is not important because of who they are. And it's done in leadership positions. We're in leadership positions and this is being done on public, right here, during city council meeting, task force, commission meetings. So just a reminder to this city council, everyone on this council and in this city is just as important as another person. The council, we've all been voted in as leaders. The community is watching us, our children are watching us, and they're all learning from this. So I'm gonna repeat my challenge from October 19th to the city council as leaders in our community. First, we need to treat each other along with our ideas as equal equally important as you think your ideas are. Some, or same goes for the community members, they and their ideas are equally important as well. Second, practice personal integrity so that it flows into your leadership. And finally, choose to provide support to each other, including some of commissions or task force, rather than ruthless criticism, whether it's in the chambers publicly or behind closed doors. Thank you.
As someone who's not on social media, would you like to tell us who you're speaking about? So that they could perhaps defend themselves?
Well, they, i- if they, if anybody feels like they need to defend themselves, they can certainly do that. You know, it's there, I have heard and I have seen things on a closed social media group and it it's literally sad. And I
Were you a member of the closed social media group?
What's that?
Are you a member of the closed social media?
No, I'm not.
Apparently, it's not very closed.
No, it's not.
One of the issues
And nothing on, nothing on on social media is closed. Nothing is private. People think it is because it says private, but it's not. Nothing is private. Nothing is really closed. So anything you put on social media, we have to remember that. Anything you put on social media, it it's out there. It's gonna be out there. So even if it says closed or private, it's not. And so I'd just like for us to remember that these task force and commissions, you know, if somebody's coming out and and literally being rude and chastising and questioning, you know, do that behind closed doors and directly to the people that you're chastising and and upset with. Don't publicly, as a leader, go out and say, this is horrible, whatever. Maybe we need to talk one on one with somebody because maybe we're not understanding something. But i- you sit, if we sit here as leaders and we have the task force, you know, a diverse task force, and we're sitting there and chastising people, even people, minorities here, how how are we going to be, how are we welcoming? How is this gonna work if we as city council members are chastising a minority for stepping up and being a leader in a in a task force? How is that okay? It's not.
So I guess my suggestion to you would be to communicate that directly because on a couple of occasions, you've talked about council members being ruthless to people. And I I I don't know what you're talking about, maybe because
Well, then maybe you don't have to anything to worry about. But I'm sure the people that
I'm not worried for myself personally, but I guess I think that you're asking us to be direct and and communicate directly. But your comments have been very cryptic and I think it leaves people wondering, you know, what is the council doing that's ruthless? Because I certainly don't know, and I'm not sure how to answer that if people were to ask me. And so I think that if you want, you're asking people to communicate directly, and I guess I'm asking you to do that. And if you would like to do that one to one with the person that you are
Oh, I definitely will. And I will talk to that person.
I gotta agree with Ann on this, Heather, because I don't even know what a closed social media group is. I have no idea what you're talking about. But if you've got a problem with somebody in the council, you really need to talk to them individually and not do it in this cryptic way so nobody knows who you're talking about. You're making accusations about people without identity.
Okay, I'll come right out and say it. Brian, I've seen Brian on the social media, literally asking why Shane and his wife are on this and and asking and literally being just not nice. And that makes that makes them question. They literally questioned the rest of the task force and said, do you guys feel like we should be on here? Is there a problem with us? Does anybody have an issue with us being on here because we are husband and we're and wife? You know, so that really disappointed me because these people are two people that are very wonderful, what they're doing, and they are very passionate. And it it just, it broke my heart to hear them so upset about that. And I don't want, it makes people question, it makes people leave when all they're trying to do is help.
So to be clear, to put that in context, I believe that statement was before I had met any of the people on the commission, I was not a big fan of having married couples on the commission that went both for the Black Lidges and the Brunkhors. I didn't think that it's necessary to have a husband or wife on the same commission. Now, I'm not saying anything about Shane or his wife. I wasn't saying anything about their qualifications. And it was before, it was when we had a list of names and we didn't know who was on the commission. I didn't know who these people were. So in general, I think that most commissions don't have husband or wife serving on the same commission. Now, does that think, does that mean I don't think Shane was qualified? Does it mean I don't think Amber was qualified? Absolutely not. I think that you're reading statements into it that I didn't stay. I I think that you're taking some of my comments completely out of context and reading vicious intent into them. Asking questions before I have answers, I think, is a natural approach. I I, there are a lot of people who are on that commission where I didn't know who they were and I was asking, who are these people? That's not saying question, questioning, do I think they belong or not belong? I mean, I didn't know why they were.
Well, that's when you need to ask the mayor and maybe talk to the mayor about who these people are and saying, okay, why did you choose this person? Maybe we need to go and assist the mayor in choosing people or give the mayor input and question, saying, okay, I don't know these people. Or and maybe going and and talking to other people and bringing them in and saying, hey, why don't you be part of this commission or apply, you know? That's what we need to do. And to do it in a in a closed group, I think is inappropriate. I think that to question somebody face to face. You're right, Rothie, Dr. Rothie, I should have just straight up and said, you know, Brian, this is the issue, but I kind of wanted to save face and do it, you know, one on one. But I also want everybody else to understand, everybody on on here or anybody in a leadership position, that it's okay to question, but we also need to support. And i- if you need, if you want to come up with ideas, but don't assume something. You know, you should go and you should talk to somebody before you assume something and 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 battle on about what the heck is going on. I don't think these people should be on here and who is this and who's that? Go find out.
Well, I wish you
Somebody on a social media group when you don't even know, go talk to somebody about it.
And I I think you would have done that in this case because I think this could have been handled more appropriately by you asking Brian about his questions. I think part of the problem with social media is people attempt to have meaningful dialogue when you cannot understand inflection, context, or anything about people's questions. And and it's normal to ask questions. We want people to be curious about this task force and who's on it and and what they, what their goals might be for the task force. And if you answer, if you, in this case, you ask a question and you're accused of being ruthless, which I think unless there were more statements that Brian made, and I don't know of him to be a ruthless
Well, you were sitting there at the last task force meeting. The way he, the way he questioned the task force and almost attacked the the task force, I felt was ruthless. And it brought me to tears to listen to that. He approached the task force, he was not supportive. You were not supportive, Brian, at all.
I'm not quite sure what you're talking about. I would say I was identifying. I I remember, I was there. I believe I was talking about how some people on the commission were fortunate to have a unique perspective that other people didn't. Now, you may have been reading things into my statement that I didn't make, and I'm sorry if you misunderstood me. But I'm not quite sure what what you were reading into my statement.
Well, I'm gonna ask from now on that maybe adjust tone and the context, be supportive and definitely ask question, but being ruthless and rude, I think, is inappropriate. And and to definitely listen to yourself and take a deep breath before, before, you know, before you speak.
Let let me just say this in support of Brian. I've known him for a long, long time. And he's a very questioning person, a deep thinker.
And that's great.
I've never known him to be intentionally ruthless or rude.
I think to get back to the original purpose of this conversation, it was to decide whether we want to support the task force in going forward and exploring becoming a commission. I I think that is a worthy goal for them. I think they're going to need guidance to do that and to come up with a list of goals that are realistic for them. And it might take time, but I think a good way to start would be to have a speaker come possibly from the League of Cities or Workburg to help them have consistent definition about some of the terms and to have someone who perhaps has worked on a diversity and inclusion commission, either for a municipality or a college or some other large organization, give them some guidance about how to go about this. I think I think that would be helpful for them and perhaps the city council could also give input into that. But that's my thoughts about going forward to to create a commission.
I know this discussion has gone on way too long, but I just want to add my thoughts to this is I I think that having a city commission of diversity is a natural progression from where we're at. I would fully support that. I think that the key here is that Waverly is not a diverse community. And I think that the charge for this group needs to say, needs to take a look at why we're not a diverse community, what barriers there are to diversity and some ways that we can overcome those barriers. And I think that's the key to what this group i- it needs to accomplish.
Right, anything from Matt or Chris? Not obligated, but just wanted to give you an opportunity.
I, my only comment is I agree with what's been said. And I think that I would welcome a permanent part of the city. And I think that, that I would welcome a, a permanent part of the city, um, in the form of a commission with the human equity and inclusion. I think that would be a, a very nice addition to our, um, to oth- other volunteers that, uh, do some great work for the community.
Thank you, sir. Matt?
You know, I just have one point and it's, I think everyone, well, maybe not everyone knows. I'm kind of a 10,000-foot view kind of person. I would just say as we continue along in, in, um, that, this exercise and as we grow that, that, um, you know, I think it's obviously wonderful that we're looking inward to our community and our policy, but that we also make sure that our policy is sustainable outward. Um, you know, that's where I, I see government doing a lot of, a lot of big failures on, um, uh, on, on people, really of all colors, but it does disproportionately hurt minorities in a big, big way. And it's very sad what's going on.
All right, I think I've, or we've collectively gathered a consensus here, Mr. Bronner.
Uh, yes, sir. We'll, um, look at trying to maybe bring forth a first effort to create a commission, uh, probably first week in January. In the meantime, I know the diversity is me, commission's meeting again or task force, excuse me, um, on the 17th, I believe. And we'll try to kinda walk through some of the discussion council's had tonight. Try and get with Carla and maybe get a good summary of that. Um, and then kinda see how we, how we move forward. And that's the best I can tell you at this point.
All right. Thank you. Moving forward, uh, item H, reports from boards and commissions. Item one is golf course or golf commission minutes from August 11th of 2020. Item two is leisure services commission minutes from August 20th of 2020. And item three is the library board minutes of September 8th, 2020, all received into record. Mr. Bronner staff, updates item I.
I believe we have a brief update from, uh, Garrett, sir, but I don't think there's anything after that. Garrett, if you would.
Yep, thank you, James. Uh, good evening, everyone. Uh, just wanted to remind everyone about the, uh, candlelight walk this Saturday, November 7th, uh, out on the rail trail. Uh, we'll be starting, uh, there at the trailhead right behind Quick Star East. Uh, begins at five o'clock. It goes from five o'clock until seven. Uh, we'll have a bonfire at the turnaround point, uh, with hot chocolate. So if you can get out, come join us. Uh, if you wanna help set up, we're starting that at 3:30. And yeah, should be great weather for it, uh, according to the forecast right now. So we'll see how that goes. Uh, then the other thing that I have is, uh, the progress on the mural. Um, Dan has not been able to work on it, uh, here the last week or so, uh, with the weather how it's been. Uh, we do have a few good days this week, so I think he's gonna get down there and work on it a little more. Uh, but it will not be finished this fall. He will come back in the spring and, uh, finish it up then. Thank you.
I think it's all we have tonight, sir.
All right, I appreciate that. Um, gonna go just around the horn here with, I've got Mr. Drinko first for council comments.
Well, I just wanna say Garrett mentioned the mural. I think it looks fantastic. If you haven't had a chance to, uh, take a look at it, uh, you know, go down there and, uh, and see it. It's, it's really quite something.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Schneider?
Um, I just wanna say, you know, the public is panicked and it is our job and it is our role to reel that in. And I don't see a lot of that going on at all, especially in government. Uh, and even big business and big tech and, um, it, the media, oof. That is, that definitely needs to, we need to take a look at that. And no, Brian, I'm not starting a conspiracy. And, um, you know, I consider that insultive. It's, it's really quite ridiculous. In fact, y- you know, we should be listening to the science. And there are a, there is a wide, wide diverse of scientists and epidemiologists who are very concerned about this. Uh, and I can provide you with lists and I can get phone numbers and we can call them and talk to them, but the science is out there. And why? The media is not picking this up? I mean, um, I'm, I'm sure there's some reasons, but if I talked about them, I probably would get labeled a conspiracy theorist. So I won't do that. But I think it is very fair and I think everyone can agree that the media has been horrible in this. They're talking about cases and they don't know at all w- what, they're not explaining what that even means. And that is causing public panic and that concerns me. So as leaders, we need to dial down the public panic and be calm and be rational about it. And I haven't seen calm and I haven't seen rational. So I'm hopeful that we can have a scientific discussion about these terrible coronavirus policies that have, have gotten into the city.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Bergen's up next. Nice, I mean, Mr. Bergen, you're muted.
I was gonna say, um, COVID numbers are up. It's, um, really scary seeing what's happening to the numbers in our community. Um, we really need to do what we can to flatten the curve. Flattening the curve means decreasing the transmission coefficient. It doesn't have a lot to do with herd immunity. It has to do with decreasing the rate at which, uh, the disease is passed from person to person so that we don't exceed our capacity. What we are really experiencing is COVID fatigue. We are tired of having to hunker down and avoid transmission and the social distancing because it is physically and emotionally exhausting. And it's hard. It's hard in our community. It's hard on our people. We are doing permanent psychological damage to our children and our friends and the people in our community. But denying the existence of the disease is not gonna make the disease go away. What we really need are the people in this community to be responsible and take ownership for the health of our community members and the other people in this community. And being irresponsible and not wearing a mask and not washing your hands and saying that this is all just a fear of, of virus is not helping us get past this pandemic. So I think that we need to be kind to each other and acknowledge the fact that we are all under stress dealing with this pandemic. And we need to see how we can support each other and support each other by protecting each other's health. And that includes washing hands, that includes wearing masks, that includes socially distancing. We really need to come together as a community and support each other and support each other with kindness.
All right, thank you. Um, Ms. Rothy?
Um, I wanna thank all the people that came out Saturday to the Fairway parking lot to support Heritage Days. Uh, when we arrived there at 10 o'clock, both bins were full and overflowing, uh, with cans and bottles. And we spent three hours, uh, unloading those and then sorting the donations that people dropped off. So I really appreciate that. Um, as the weather gets colder, we, we might not do another one of those where we stand out there for three hours. We'll see. Um, but, uh, also want to remind people, you can, even though a bunch of people have already voted, you can vote tomorrow the old-fashioned way. So, uh, please do that. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next up, I got Mr. Glazer.
I don't have anything to say, man, thanks.
All right then, um, Ms. Bowfer?
Um, so I have five things, but they're super quick, I promise. I've spoken enough tonight. Um, number one, wash your hands. That is the most important way to stop the spread of infection. We need to bring that up a notch is to wash our hands, disinfect the surfaces, um, frequently touch surfaces. Uh, stay home when you're sick and employers need to really be sympathetic to, um, people that maybe have children or people that are sick. So, um, people do stay home. Um, you know, wear that, that mask, um, if you can. Um, I can't wear these cloth masks because they make me sick. I do, I can and I will wear these surgical masks. Um, they don't make me sick. Um, so I, I do wear a mask just in case. Um, I don't wanna spit anything on anybody if I'm sick. Um, and the fifth one is stop touching your face. Um, that might help tremendously as well. So that's it.
Thank you, ma'am. And my mayor pro tem, Mr. Kengis.
I would echo Ann's comments about, uh, voting. If you have not, uh, taken advantage of the early voting opportunities, uh, to please get out and take part in the process. It is, um, it's a right, um. I view it kind of as a responsibility on addition to a right. Uh, and you get what you, you, you put into it, um, as far as that. On those lines, it's been a fairly hot, uh, contested, uh, emotional, uh, campaign on a number of fronts. Um, I would like to say, you know, I'm grateful to live in Waverly where we do have disagreements, but we're not looking at having to board up, uh, plywood up businesses and, and fear for, uh, an outcome that we might not like causing, um, violence or, or destruction or, or anything like that happening within town. And I would just like to think that regardless of the results, that people will be able to stay neighborly. Stay on good terms with each other. We can agree to disagree. It's part of the process. We get a chance every two years to vote for Congress, every four years for president. Yeah. Four out, two out of the every, of those years alternating, we get of every three national elections, we get to vote for senator. So we have opportunities to have our say and change if we don't like the direction that was chosen the last time. So, happy Monday.
I appreciate that, uh, Tim, thank you. The only thing I wanted to, um, articulate was I appreciate, what I observed anyway, was, uh, some safe trick-or-treating. I ran into a lot of people that, um, were inventive with remote candy delivery systems and some people just putting it on a bowl with a nice note, take one. Uh, other people, you know, laying them out on the porch and in between trick-or-treats would go and refill. So they're all separated and, and that kind of thing and talking through the door. So, um, one household, uh, shared with me that they had over 150, which is the most that they've ever had in their particular neighborhood, that's an established neighborhood. So, um, with that being said, I'm glad that we, we moved forward with it to some sense of normalcy. And I also appreciate those that self-chose not to participate, um, due to whatever reason. Um, whether they felt that they could give the coronavirus to someone or get it from someone, but that was the premise, uh, for the whole thing. So I respect those people that chose to bow out for the, the event as well. So other than that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move that we adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Kengis, second by Rathy. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, the same sign? Motion carries very adjourned. Thank you, everyone.